Good morning. I'd like to call this work session of the Southampton Town Board to order on this 25th day of September 2018. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. All right. Kim, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Supervisor Schneiderman?
Here.
Councilwoman Laffstad?
Yes.
Here. Councilwoman Scolera?
Here.
He'll be joining us momentarily.
Councilman Skivoni?
Present.
All right, so let's get started. Our first order of business on the agenda is an update of capital projects concerning our Parks Department. We have our town Parks Director, Kristin Dullos. Kristin, will you come forward? We have Brian Bortfield, our Assistant Towns Parks Director, Mary Wilson, our CPF Coordinator, Diana Weir is here, Director of our Housing and Community Development. And we will try to get a few others to join us as well, so. Do we need to have Len before we start? There's John.
Your name plates are backwards.
No, it's okay. All right, can we mark John is here? And Deputy Supervisor Frank Sapon is joining us. And Len will be here momentarily. Can we start without Len? I think we could probably... Do you want to introduce it?
Sure. We are here to update the board on... We have many projects going on right now, but there are two in particular that we're here to speak with you about today. The first being the Pon Quah Beach Pavilion and Facility Rehabilitation, and the second being the Hot Dog Beach Repair and Renovation and Rehabilitation. So, as you have all been involved with over the past year, year and a half or so, we started Pon Quah Beach with a conceptual design. And we had gone out to the community with surveys, with public sessions, and incorporated a lot of their wants and needs into those plans. So, more recently, we've been working with DMB, who did the architectural and engineering plans for the facility. We have gone out to bid. We went out to bid once. We only received one general construction bid that time, one electrical bid, and three plumbing bids. They all came in much higher than anticipated. We went out... We rejected those bids, all except for the plumbing, because we did also obtain a county contract quote for that, and it came in higher. So, with that, we went with the low bidder. With the general construction and electrical, we went out for a second time to bid, and they did come back still higher than anticipated.
But better than the first?
But better than the first time. So, at this time, we are hoping to still move forth with the project. However, it is over what the anticipated budget was initially. So, we are looking to hope that the town board moves forth with supporting it at this time, because we believe that if we shelf the project, the numbers are only going to continue to go up. It is, you know...
What's driving the acceleration of the costs? Is it paving? Is it E-Pay? Is it siding? Do we know?
I think it's just the general... It's all of those things. You know, material costs are high. E-Pay is high in demand.
Labor is...
But it's... I think the economy is very good right now, particularly for construction industry. You know, there's been articles in Newsday recently how it's the number-one booming industry right now on Long Island. They're being very selective in what they even bid on, so...
And they're coming in high, and if they don't get it, they don't get it. If they get it, they'll do it.
Exactly. There's just... They have so much work right now that they're able to be selective with what they're bidding on. And so, I don't foresee that in speaking with a lot of our different contractors, not just the one we work with on this project. They all seem to think it's not coming down anytime soon. And in fact, with the recent storms in the Carolinas, next year, we could be looking at even higher material costs, because E-Pay is the recommended marine material by the Army Corps of Engineers. So, I think it's going to be even higher.
I'm sure we have a lot of boardwalks to repair down in the Carolinas, yeah?
It'll probably only likely be in higher demand and more costly heading into the next couple of years.
So, what are we talking about? We budgeted, I think, close to $2 million for this project?
Correct. We started this year with a little over $2.1 million. Right now, we still would need about $1.17 million to complete the project.
So, it's $3.2 is the total?
It brings the total to about $3.3.
$3.3.
What do we budget in total already?
This year, we started with $2.169. We had spent a little bit last year on consultant fees, so I don't have the exact...
I mean, originally, we hoped this was $1.5 million. But then we upped it to $2.
Yeah. Initially, it came in about $1.8. Then, our second round of estimates when we got to this phase of the project was about $2 million, $2.1 million. And the prices just came in over what was anticipated.
About $1.1, roughly short.
Correct.
So, this project includes what, a new booth, right? A new reception, whatever.
Yep, the new attendance booth, entryway improvements.
The whole parking lot is improved, drainage is placed in it, and then it's all...
Green gardens, landscaping.
New siding for the building, new roofing, the cupolas are kind of some engineered glasswork up there.
We're doing the bathrooms.
And then the bathrooms, showers. And then the deck is expanding by like 30%.
To the south, yep. All new decky railings.
And then redoing the entryway to the beach itself. So, it's... There's a lot of parts to it.
And we went higher on some of the original materials because we wanted to have environmentally friendly materials.
Right. We went with the Green Heart piles, because, like you said, we wanted to use best practices in the marine environment.
Well, it's also an economy for us, too. It's longer lasting, right?
Right.
We're not... Is the sanitary system, is that being upgraded, too?
Not at this time. We do hope to do that in the future.
But we're not expanding it? Maybe one day, we'll do an IA system or something.
Right. I think that was the thought. It's also a very aggressive timeline. No matter when we do this project, we're always going to be asking a contractor to do it between Labor Day and Memorial Day. So...
So, if we add $1 million to the project, roughly $1 million? So, that will add $1 million... The debt service on that $1 million?
You're going to add $1.2 million.
$1.2 million to the project. Is that what the difference is?
You'll have a resolution on next week if you approve it to bond an additional $1.2 million.
Right. So, the debt service on that will kick in probably the following year? So, around 2020 is when we'll start to carry that?
Yeah. What I was proposing was that we'd loan the money on a short term so we can start the work now, and then we'll borrow it in next spring.
From the general fund?
Correct. And then we'll borrow... And then we'll reimburse the general fund when we get the proceeds from the bonds next April.
And this is a... We're not doing this as a park district project. We're doing this as a general fund.
General fund.
Because this is everybody's beach here, so...
Well, no. No. Let me rephrase that. It's the parks... The beaches are in an enterprise fund. But if there's a shortfall in the funding of an enterprise fund, we fund it with a transfer from the general fund. So, in effect...
You don't have to pay it back, though, when you do that?
Well, we try to pay all of the beach expenses with beach revenues. That's the concept.
I see.
But sometimes, they're short or not, and we supplement it with general fund.
So, to figure out whether there's a tax impact to this... Now, we might... We're already seeing more uses of our beach, right? Our beach permits have gone up this year. Was the jump, or no? Because I know Hot Dog Beach was packed, and we opened Sandbar Beach.
They're usually fairly consistent. Yeah. I mean, we sell permits, and then people could use any of the facilities. So, it didn't necessarily increase the sales of any permits. But Hot Dog was very well utilized this summer.
But would we allow people to park by the day, or no?
We haven't done that at Hot Dog. Yeah, we're not set up for any selling of permits there at this time, but, you know, it's something we could...
Because I don't want to increase the fee that residents pay. But maybe we can look at what visitors pay, tourists pay, and, you know, make sure that that's appropriate. If somebody, let's say, is staying in Hampton Bays, they should be able to use the beaches in Hampton Bays. They should be able to pay by the day. They can at Pon Quah.
They can. They can at Pon Quah, Tiana. All of our attended beaches sell dailies, except for Scott Cameron, because that's a deeded beach for residents only.
So, getting back to what is the taxpayer impacts here? So, the debt services on an additional $1 million, $1.2 million, right? And that would be...
Well, the whole project, we're going to borrow. It's going to be $3 million and change.
What was the additional debt service?
And it's paid for first through park revenue.
That's what we...
And if that falls short, then it goes to general obligation.
We'll transfer some money from the general fund to cover it.
So, let me ask you this question. Is the IA system, the flow rates have been determined for that. Was that part of the original deal or not? So, have you made any applications to the CPF fund to offset those costs?
Before you go in this direction, I just want to kind of finish up on that sort of issue.
We haven't, but that was definitely talked about. It's on... I believe it's on Kyle Collins has like a list of priority facilities.
And the only reason I'm asking the question is I'm just trying to do the additive here, so I guess...
Yeah, it's definitely been...
We're considering that, and I think we're going to do that. But you can't do it in this phase, anyway, so we're going to do it in the next phase.
It's a minor amount, I think, in context of... That's the only reason I didn't know what the actual...
So, here's a question I'm trying to frame. So, you have a... We're being asked to put another $1.2 million into a beach pavilion. Yeah, we have lots of beach facilities. There's a policy decision underlying this, you know? I've been saying that Pon Quah Beach, to me, is our flagship beach. It's, you know, I think it's probably the... One of the highest-used beaches within the town. The pavilion is in really bad shape, in my estimation. It needs repair. Are we willing to, you know, to get the job done that the community, when we vetted this, wanted? We have to come up with another $1.2 million. So, it's... There's a policy. We're then burdening the community with paying that debt, but it seems like it's pretty manageable. And that's really what I'm getting at, Len. I mean, between the parks...
It's in our plan.
It's what?
It's in the plan, like in our capital plan.
In your current budget proposal.
Yeah.
But what's the debt service difference between, I think...
Well, I would think that this is about a 15-year bond. So, on $1.2 million, it's probably another $100,000 a year, maybe $90,000 a year.
What are we getting on the concession there?
Right now...
Are we going to rebid the concession?
Yeah. We'll be going back out for the concession.
So, that's... That could produce a revenue...
Because now you're going to have this gorgeous pavilion. We ought to maybe get a little more out of the concession there.
That's what we would expect and hope for.
That could offset the costs, you know? And maybe more use by visitors. We have to look at the rates we charge for the dailies and...
Well, we're not proposing any changes in that right now.
Well, this... But the debt service doesn't kick in for another year, anyway. So, it wouldn't be in this budget, but maybe in a future budget.
Right. It would be in the '20 budget.
'20 budget is when we'll start to carry the debt service. We could revisit our...
When are we building this, in 2019?
No, now.
We want to get started in October, if possible.
So, we're not going to realize any of those bond proceeds until 2020?
Yeah. When you borrow money, you don't make the first payment until another year after you borrow it.
But 2018, we're borrowing it?
No, we're going to borrow it in the spring of '19.
So, we're going to use...
So, once if you borrow stuff that closes in April, say, of '19, your first payment isn't until like January of '20.
Well, we already borrowed... We've already borrowed...
Did you take that debt load in the interim?
We've already borrowed some.
You accrue interest. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Len, we've already...
Just course gets accrued. It just don't... You don't have to make a physical payment until the following year.
Len, we've already borrowed some of it, haven't we?
$2 million.
$2 million. So, it's just the additional, which we...
$2.1 million is in the...
So, we've moved out of reserves, the differential, so that we could award the bid, and then you...
Yeah. Next week, there's going to... If you approve it, there'll be two or three resolutions. I'm not sure how we have it. There's one would be to have a bond resolution. One would be to loan the money from the general fund to start the project now, because typically, we don't like starting the projects unless we have 100% of the funding in place. And then the third one would be to award the contracts to the various vendors. I guess there might be a few of them.
It's a mixed-law project, so we have to...
There's a few contractors.
...award to three different contractors.
So, there's a bunch of resolutions, if we all are agreement, that have to be addressed.
So, there's no point of this where you're going out for rebid on anything that we're talking about now, correct? So, we're set, so you're simply talking about the addition, too?
And what's the alternative if the board was not supportive? Nothing happens? Yeah. It's not really a project that could be phased. It's all or nothing. Yeah.
Right. You could potentially shrink the project. You have to decide what you wanted to take away.
Right. Well, I think, like you said, we went to the community and the community...
There's some nice features, right? You've got some shaded areas, some trellises.
You wouldn't do buildings without doing the parking lot and entranceway, and vice versa.
Agreed.
Yeah. You could probably just shrink it somehow, but it would be hard.
And then you'd just be adding time onto the project, which is going to escalate, you know, other costs potentially as well.
I have a couple of questions. The $3.3 million and the increase of $1.2 million, those are the lower of bids that we got?
The lowest, yeah. After going out to bid twice, we go out to bid, and yeah, the... Those were the lowest bids that were returned for each electrical, general construction, and plumbing.
Do these contracts have performance guarantees and stuff? Sorry about that.
I believe so, Allison.
Yes.
Or client.
It's a... They have to produce what... We have a construction manager, and so, at the end of the period when it's finished constructing, there'll be a sign-off by the engineer of record and the vendor.
I'm just looking for cost creep opportunities or cost creeping.
No, no. Once they put the prices... We didn't put any variables into the contract.
Would this project be done by next summer?
That's the goal.
Yeah, it would have to be done. It's currently written as having to be completed by May 15.
Okay. I have a question. I think it's for you, Len. You mentioned the capital plan. I wonder publicly here how this would affect other projects in the town. And I think that's a policy decision from the board.
So, is the question like, if we add $1 million to this, do we have to subtract $1 million somewhere else?
Right. And I don't know where that somewhere else is.
We are... We're about to... You know, we're getting the budget soon. Was it Tuesday?
Like next week.
And that includes a capital plan?
And we are proposing to reduce the amount of town indebtedness significantly, you know, by retiring quite a bit of debt, so...
Yeah, there's a lot of things going on on the debt side of our...
Are we going to be replacing it in kinds, or is it going to be still netted out?
Net lower.
Because I know it's going to jump. It has jumped over the years.
Well, some of it's CPF, so, you know, but we are reducing the overall indebtedness that the town has by a significant amount.
Yeah, and then there's some other debt that is callable next year that I'm going to come back to you with. There's a bunch of moving parts that could save us a bunch of money.
Callable, meaning bonds that we have out that we can pay off using general funds or other?
Well, or refinance, like a refinance. And those are more general obligation bonds for the operating funds, not just the CPF fund. CPF fund, we came up with a plan. We were going to call in about $22 million worth of bonds come January and April of next year. So, that's in motion, and that's going to save us a whole bunch of money. But then, there's also some other general obligation bonds that we had issued. Now, it's nine years, but it will be 10 years, because they're not callable until 10 years. And they'll be due next year, too. And depending on where interest rates are, it might go away from us. But if they're better, we'll refinance it, and then we'll save some money.
Yeah, there's policy decisions ahead. There's other capital projects. We're doing the town hall, heating and air conditioning. You know, at some point, the justice court is going to have to get replaced. There are things down the road that, you know, infrastructure, we have to maintain. I look at the beach pavilion and think, you know, that's something that everybody uses. It's something that will strengthen property values in that whole Hampton Bays region, as well as elsewhere. So, like, to me, it's a good investment. In terms of how it's going to affect taxpayers, I'm not anticipating there'll be any tax increases associated with it because of the way the town has been growing and the revenues are growing, that we should be able to, you know, manage that debt service. Things that increase property values also increase revenue to the town.
So, I'm hearing that it may not affect any other projects in the town, and that's important.
I'm not seeing that we'll have to not do a project if we put additional $1 million here. I don't think so, but that's really a board policy decision.
Well, but the decision is based on the question, and it's all in general.
No, it's great. It's an excellent question. To do this, is something going to suffer?
And I follow the plan. I like the plan. I think E-Pay is the right choice on the deck. I think, you know, the Hart Pine, you know? All of those things are fantastic. The roof that was chosen on the board here.
You know, what's now, after we do this...
And I do believe in investing in facilities. That part is important to me.
We'll be putting camera systems out here, too, and there'll be a lot of...
No, it will set the standard. And this is both a positive and a negative. Once this beach is done, everybody's going to want to have a facility like this. But it would be nice to have at least one, you know, first-class beach facility.
Okay. And so, we'll be seeing the capital plan with the budget? When you...
Yeah. Yes. We're finishing it now. It's in print. It's just... He's going to present it, I think, next week, next Thursday.
Next Thursday, yeah?
Next Thursday? Thursday or Tuesday? Thursday?
Thursday.
I thought it was Tuesday.
Thursday?
At least on my calendar.
That's when I hand them the budget? It's Thursday?
Yes.
So, we're doing it at a work session or a special meeting?
And Len's going to say yes.
We're doing a special town board meeting for Thursday?
On Thursday, yeah, I think, yeah.
So, I can hand everybody the budget?
Go through the ceremony.
Well, they already took my bike.
All right. So, board, this is a work session. We're supposed to have this interactive process here. Are we willing to do this? Where should... I think we should. I don't think we should abandon this project. The community's got their hearts in it. I think it's going to be a really nice improvement. It's a really popular beach. It's a wide beach. It's rundown. And it is, you know, 30% more than we anticipated. Everything seems to be coming in high right now for lots of different reasons. But I think that waiting isn't the right thing either. It's likely to get higher. I think we can do it. Based on my understanding of the budget, I think that this is something that we could invest in, this pavilion. I think we'll be glad we did. So, I'm going to support the additional $1.2 million. But I'd like to hear from everybody. Julie, I'll start with you.
I agree with you. I think financially, according to Len, it's doable. Won't be a huge negative impact on our taxpayers. I think it's going to be a boon. I think a beautiful new beach pavilion's going to attract more people, and we can offset, you know, so we'll be making more revenue. And it definitely needs a rehab, so I'll support as well.
As far as how it currently looks.
The before and after. All right. Christine?
I anticipate supporting it. I think, obviously, it does need rehabilitation. That gets more costly the more we tend to not do it. The community... This is something that they have, you know, very much supported and want to see move forward. And I'd like to see it move forward for several reasons, the least of which is that we're going to attract more people, because I think it already attracts a lot of people, but it'll still be a flagship. But I do, you know, at the same time, and I'm going to be supporting it, but I do think it's... We need to keep in mind the list of all of the projects that we have, you know, going on. And I know that, you know, Kristin has been doing an amazing job. But like, we have piled on a significant amount of projects in the last two years. And our capital program has grown greatly, which is a good thing, because I also believe in investment in facilities. We just need to... Something's going to give at some point, because not only with the investment in the capital, you know, in the structure, that's going to need to be addressed in our operating at some point as well in terms of staffing and maintenance and all the other things that go along with that. So, with that in the back of our minds, obviously, this is, as I already said, something I would support, because I think it needs to be done, but...
You know, Len, you might be able to give us more information, too. Maybe not today, but, you know, as the years go on and we have to fix our infrastructure, we are also retiring old debt that was used to build some of this infrastructure. So, we're no longer having to carry debt service on older projects. So, we're retiring debt, and we're adding debt.
The stuff that we're retiring now, the infrastructure's 30 years old. We haven't... The problem with the town, as I saw it coming in here when I started a bunch of years ago, was you never kept up keeping up with stuff. So, you had all of this literally dilapidated infrastructure.
My point is, though, as we add new debt, we are also eliminating old debt. There are some projects that, you know, maybe had a 20-year lifespan.
You have a lot of growing things. You have a growing town. You have growing needs. You have... This is not a stagnant town. It's growing.
No, we have. I mean, the senior center we're going to purchase, we've got a lot of different things.
Your budget is going to have many charts regarding the debt.
Over the five years.
Because the bonded indebtedness will then reflect the things we're retiring, as well as the things that we're adding to.
Absolutely.
But that project plan, I don't think, includes all of the things that we've all been working on, too. So, we're going to have to consider that in the context of those, like Ludlam Avenue and those...
Well, you're going to have a lot of pipeline projects that you have that need to be explored, but there's a lot of them.
Are you going to continue to poll the board?
Yes. Yes, I'm going to continue. All right. So, Councilman Bouvier, who's...
Obviously, wants to say something.
Dying to weigh in here.
Just jump in, John.
Well, the financials aside, I totally agree with you. We have a lot of decaying infrastructure here. So, in my mind, I make the separation between what we need and what we want. And I think there's a big difference. We have a lot of projects of what we want, but this is a need, in my view. This is an absolute need. This structure hasn't been... It was built in the '60s. There's been very little done to it. It is the flagship of our beaches. It's important to our economy. So, it makes absolutely perfect sense to do that. However, on the other hand, we have these other want projects that I think are part of that equation, too, that we need to discuss. The needs are infrastructure, without a doubt. We're in this building. We're making a big investment in this building. We have court systems. We have all these things that are incredibly important to work on. Christine Scolera and I are liaisons to the capital projects in Parks, and I know you're being burdened with a lot. And I think we're both really cognizant of that. We're in financial... Financially, it seems like the town is doing well. We're in financial, financially, it seems like the town is doing well. We have these opportunities to do that, but I can't see, having already made an investment in this important infrastructure project, that we're not going to continue that investment and find a way to make it happen. So I'm absolutely supportive of this, but I do want to add the caveat that there are the need projects and the want projects. Now, we need to make that distinction.
All right. Tommy, John, your turn.
I was at the beach pavilion this summer, and I inspected it, you know, walk around, take a look at the deck, and it's going to need to be replaced. And it's not just a question of if, it's when. And so, so long as we have room in our debt service, that this isn't going to increase and significantly affect other projects that we want to do in the town, then, then yes, I would support it. And I do believe in investing in infrastructure. I believe it's good for the local economy, and this would be our flagship beach. You know, it's kind of like buying a new pair of sneakers, you know? You realize how old your other pairs are, you know? And this, I think, okay, bad analogy, but this will, when we compare this new beach to our others, we're probably going to want to be improving those as well.
Yes, yeah, like you were saying before, that's the only problem with that.
We're going to get a lot of new pairs of sneakers.
Yeah, making some. It highlights.
However, you're saying damage.
Well, I think that's our second project. That's a great transition. Hot Dog Beach is where we're moving.
It's going to be all the next ten hours.
All right. So it sounds like all five of us are willing to move forward. It's unfortunate that the costs are going up.
And yes, right, to finish, I'm willing to move forward on this project. I just don't want to end with the sneaker thing. I certainly benefit.
You want to run forward.
See, this is going to be a half hour of bad puns. It's not going to stop.
Heal it, would you?
So, thank you for your consideration and support of the Pon Quod project. We do look forward to moving forward with that, so thank you again.
You're welcome.
Hot Dog Beach is the other project we wanted to speak with you about today. This project is, is everybody familiar with the location of Hot Dog Beach? It's on June Road, a little bit west of our Tiana facilities. It was closed for several years. There had originally been a restaurant there that had a fire, burned down most of the facilities there. Then CPF had bought it, I believe, in 2001, and it's been gated and locked for several years until last summer, was the first summer we reopened it. So there's currently two walkovers to access the ocean. One of them is in total disrepair and has been just fenced off. So we've been allowing for use of the one that is more eastern located. It has become one of our most popular beach facilities within a two-year period. We had a food contract with a mobile taco truck this summer. Trident, which is the access road immediately to the east of it, you know, was packed as well. So, you know, it's a really, a really popular facility, and we want to see it, you know, improved and in good shape and safe for our beach covers.
A lot of families up to this year.
Yes, a lot of families, a lot of surfers. It was really.
There was like a sandbar or something, creating a good.
There's a sandbar in that area.
I was there a lot this summer. It was, I love it. It's perfect.
Well, yeah, that, I think.
Except for access.
The food truck, I think, really made a difference. Like, so once you can, like, spend the day on the beach, come up and, you know, have buy a bottle of water or taco or whatever, it's, it makes it just a more enjoyable recreational day, so.
Yeah.
It's a nice walk.
Yeah, people have been talking about the taco truck, and so, yeah, I think just everything about it. People are really enjoying the beachfront there, and it's a little off the beaten path. So we've been working with McLean to redesign the walkover access, and there would actually be a little deck up top connecting those two access points, so you could see that in this drawing here. So we've been working with Mary.
This is a CPF project, right?
It's, it's a combination of town funding, CPF funding, and CDBG funding.
Okay.
CDBG funding would pay for that handicap concrete access parking pad that you see in the rendering there. She's, CDBG's also helping with some costs related to the ADA access ramp and railings. So this project is, this one came in about forty thousand dollars over budget with the bids that we received back, and then about additional thirty thousand for the inspection services we're going to need during the course of the project. In speaking with Mary, she has been able to find money to cover that difference due to some money that was freed up some other projects.
The full seventy or the?
Yes. So we are looking to put a resolution on to, I believe, to amend Mary's budget to free up that money, put it into the project, and move forth with awarding the work to the contractor.
This could get also done by next summer?
By the end of this year.
By the end of this year?
Correct.
Wonderful. Even better.
Yes.
So now, is this very similar to what was there in terms of design, or it's kind of more of a, it's a different design?
Well, this is what's currently there. The switchback is being moved a little bit further south from where it had been, but other than that, the layout of the walkovers is staying the same.
They didn't have the deck, though, right?
And there was not a deck platform, right? So we're creating a deck platform up top, so people can, we'll put a couple of picnic tables, people could go up the ADA access ramp, sit up top on the deck.
It's pretty rickety right now.
Yeah, the, well, the one is totally inaccessible.
What happens? I mean, this is, this is kind of, this is great, four handicap spaces, five handicap spaces?
Five.
Five handic, so if you're in a wheelchair and you go up the ramp and you go down the walk, boardwalk, what happens at the end of the boardwalk? Is there a way to get onto the beach?
It's pretty steep right now, just from the way that the dunes are formed.
Can we do one of those mats like we do elsewhere?
We can, for sure, but I do think it, I mean, it changes a little bit year to year, but I do think it would probably be a slope that wouldn't be safe for wheelchairs.
Yeah, right now, it is, but it does change.
It does change.
So, but I know, but we're making this a really accessible beach by design, with five handicap spaces and this great ramp all the way down to the beach. You want to then be able to get people from the end of the ramp onto the beach, so otherwise, I think we'd be criticized for having spent all this money to create all this access that's not really usable. Is, what would it take to get, I don't know, so a little more sand there or some matting that you could take the wheelchair a little further out?
Um, I'd have to investigate that with our consultant.
Is that something CDBG money could cover, that piece of it?
It's accessible, yeah.
Yeah, if it's involving accessibility.
Maybe you could look into that last, you know, fifty feet or something.
Well, it could just be more, more wooden walkway, you know, that would not change, because you can't put something that does it, that changes all the time and say you're going to give access. It'd have to be something that would actually give access.
Sometimes we do these mats, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's the angle that's the problem.
It's getting.
Right, the grade.
It's always changing.
I have seen some, I think it was a beach in California where they had.
Where are you talking about?
It was a cantilever.
Basically here.
South of the, uh.
But how do you get from the deck?
We're getting people to here.
Which is the deck? An elevated deck? How do you get them down?
Elevated deck is here. So if you're in a wheelchair, you're coming in this way, you're going up the ramp, you're getting onto this, all the way down to there.
Right, then what's the drop on?
But you still can't get to the beach. That's the problem.
It's a pretty significant.
Like feet?
If you increase the length.
Ten feet, eight feet?
It's just the degree of the slope.
So here's your exit, this part here.
Yeah, you would have to probably do some kind of switchback.
Right, you need a switchback.
It would be very difficult. I think it would be a DEC permitting and.
Do we have stairs that go down for pedestrians, like, just walking?
They are there, but they're buried by the dunes.
So, I mean, I love this project. I think it's great, and I think we should do it, but I do think we need to, you know...
Consider that.
To consider that last section, so if you're somebody in a wheelchair, that you can actually get onto the beach.
That could be a future project, with future funding.
I would. Cut down the parking spaces, huh? Until you build that.
One of the problems is that it's very dynamic.
We'll do it in anticipation that we're going to do it.
So you don't want to make an investment and lose it because of a winter storm either. I mean, the stairs right now are buried under sand. They used to go down far. There used to be more of us.
Yeah.
It needs some consideration.
I don't want to hold this up. I'd like to move forward, but Diana, if you could start working on that last piece.
It's only money.
In designing it, and it's, but, but CD, we have grant money available for this.
Not right now. I mean, we're pretty spent out.
Maybe it's something we add on next year or something.
It would be a future, depending on what it is, you know?
I mean, once we build it, I've looked.
Yeah, you would likely need additional permitting, because you would be in the dunes.
Yeah, to them.
Right.
So look at it and get back to us soon.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, maybe, is it a way to, can we just build sand up so it's not as steep or?
Um, I think it would just, you would need permitting from DEC for sure.
Okay.
If we didn't make these improvements, do you think that the town would be facing, I don't know, legal exposure? People walking on it? Rickety? They might get hurt?
You mean if we leave it the way it is?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I don't know. Yeah. I'm not sure.
There's fire damage to it currently?
Yes, it, this was from the fire damage of the restaurant in the late nineties.
But we're fixing it.
And nothing had been done since then.
Right, so you can't even use the switchback now.
No, no.
Those are closed.
Yeah, it's pretty.
So, yeah, the answer to my question is, yeah, you got, you have problems. It's, some of it's not usable now because of fire damage.
This also would give you the access if the town ever, the thought had also been about making this perhaps the next lifeguarded and attended beach, and this is like the first step in, in being able to build out this larger deck structure. So the blue would indicate like a phase two, so you would want that ADA access, you know, in looking forward to the future as well.
Hmm. Okay. Well, I look, I think we should move forward. You know, the funding is available through CPF.
I mean, a lot of it is just securing the walkovers.
So I think on Tuesday's meeting, there's also some resolutions for this project.
Yeah, so this, to me, is a, this is an easy lift. So, all right. Julie, okay with this?
Yes, sir.
Christine? John?
I am.
Tommy, John?
How much are we talking about?
Um, the final cost.
Seventy, I suppose.
You said seventy.
Well, the shortfall is seventy thousand dollars.
Well, it's a bigger project than that.
So it's, oh, I believe the town funded ninety thousand dollars of it with town money. The CDBG is giving a hundred and five thousand dollars, and CPF is giving about, I think it's about three hundred thousand dollars. So this, the major part of it is being funded through CDBG and CPF.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
And the shortfall should be covered by CPF.
Yes.
For this current, yeah, to cover the seventy thousand.
All right, so you'll bring us the appropriate resolutions?
Yes.
All right. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so why don't we go to the upcoming agenda? This would be for the September 25th? No.
Yes.
Is that?
Today's the twentieth.
Today's the twentieth. Why do I feel like I said today was the?
Because you did. But that's because you were reading that, that's why.
Ah. Nobody caught that earlier?
Yeah, we did. We just didn't want to.
Nobody wanted to say something.
Just went with it.
But now that you brought it up.
We figured everyone would figure it out.
All right, so wait a second. When I called the meeting to order, I said the 25th, not the 20th. So how do I fix that?
A work session.
Okay. Can we please correct that? It's the, today's meeting is the 20th, work session on the 20th of September. Was that? Can we edit that, Julie?
It sounded like the 20th.
Oh, the 25th?
Well, see, that works out.
All right, perfect.
So this conversation.
Sounded like the 25th to me.
Okay. Did a little video editing. Okay, so this is the meeting of the 25th of September, and it will be here at Town Hall at 6:00 PM. It's an evening meeting, and we have two public hearings. The first hearing is for the proposed recipients of the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program. And then there's a public hearing to consider the acquisition of property located at 20 Shennock Road, Hampton Bays, for the purposes of community development. That's the Bell Era Motel property. And then we get the town board resolution. So Christine, yours is the first.
Yeah. 30116 is a 2018 Flanders Riverside North Hampton Community Association hamlet services challenge.
Tommy, John?
Town Board Resolution 30164 is to authorize purchase and installation of fencing from Suffolk County contract with residential fences.
And remember, Board, if you have questions as we go through this, just feel free to ask them. That's why we do this. 30169, authorize purchase and installation of new electrical service from Suffolk County contract with All Service Electric, Inc. 30165, authorize the supervisor to sign contract extension with G and M Dej, Inc., for vehicle fuel management system maintenance and installation. 30180, authorize the supervisor to sign contract extension for private or municipal markets for the disposal of recycling, and disposal and recycling of services.
Is this a departure from our usuals?
So let's see.
Actually, it's contract extension, so I'll assume.
Yeah, they expired, they, the Director of Municipal Works is recommending an extension of these contracts from September 2nd, 18 to September 2nd, 19, so a one-year extension. Various recyclables.
30176, authorize the supervisor to execute 2018 summer instructor contracts for parks programs.
Town Board Resolution ID 30166, authorize the supervisor to execute an amendment to contract with the Reiner Group PE and LSBLLC for land surveying, mapping, and engineering services to be provided for Meadowlark Lane road improvements in Bridgehampton.
30181, authorize the supervisor to sign contract with L.K. McLean Associates, P.C., for professional services to be provided for Hot Dog Beach Facility rehabilitation.
And actually, I'd like to be able to co-sponsor this.
Sure.
Thanks.
I don't know, I don't think that's the one we were just talking about then.
No.
But, yeah. That's 30181. 30182 is an authorization for the supervisor to sign contract with L.K. McLean Associates, P.C., for professional services to be provided for Pon Quod Beach redevelopment of the beach pavilion.
So these are for construction inspection services?
Yes.
Okay.
And there are a couple of scriven reserves in there that have already been taken care of with the clerk's office, yeah.
Is that normal, that we do construction inspection? I mean, normally have an engineer assigned to the job. So this is on top of the regular engineering? I guess so.
Yeah, they said they had specific things that they needed to have covered and looked out.
Okay. 30163, awards and authorize supervisor to sign a contract with Fisher Signs and Shirts to provide various signs to the town.
On the motion, what kind of signs? I'm just curious.
I'm looking.
And how much is it?
It was bid, it was four bids.
Yeah.
Shall not exceed individual budgets, so I guess the various contract, the various departments have budgeting for signs.
And shirts.
And shirts, yeah.
Okay, I have not told the board.
It's always, so it's not, it's, no purchase order shall be created and no payment shall be made without fully executed contract. The source of funding for this project, the various accounts, not to exceed individual budgets. So it's just, it's budgeted amounts for these things, just, I guess they won the contract. Christine, you're the next one.
30178, awards and authorize the supervisor to sign a contract, Hot Dog Beach Facility Rehabilitation, with JNS Contracting. Resolution 31, 30174, awards and authorizes supervisor to sign a contract for Pon Quod Beach redevelopment of Beach Pavilion with construction consultants for the general construction, New York trenches. Is that right?
Trenchless.
Trenchless, sorry.
Trenchless.
New York trenchless for the electric and plum well services for the plumbing portion of the Ponquod Beach redevelopment of Beach Pavilion.
And John, you want to co-sponsor that one, is it?
Uh, yeah, it's fine. The only reason the other one, it's because it's touching on Municipal Works as well, so I just want to.
Okay.
3016.
Did you want to go on?
Uh, that's fine, yeah, that would be great, thanks.
Can I do it together?
30167, recalls and rescinds Town Board Resolution 2018-767 to sign a contract with Suffolk County Water Authority to connect public water at Paxabog Cove Course.
Yes, I sort of can't explain that. So our restaurant at Paxabog is on well water. We have tested it. There are no detections of those perfluorinated compounds. Though, I think long-term, we would like to see it connected to public water. Meanwhile, we are working to install a POET system. So we are going to do a, it's a lot cheaper. This, we had hoped that we would be able to use some of the water quality money, the CPF water quality money, to extend the main. That's the big cost. That's, I think, $100,000 to get the main there. That has not yet been signed by the governor. And there are some questions of whether, even if it is signed, whether.
You mean the amendment to the legislation?
Amendment, yes. So I don't even know if it's even gone to the governor.
No, yeah, I think it's, hasn't even gone to the governor's desk yet.
And then when it does, and assuming it gets signed, it's not clear yet whether this property will qualify because there's no contamination at this site for that. So we're trying to be preemptive. So I think for now, to spend a few thousand dollars on putting a POET system in, because we do have, you know, patrons, the public uses the restaurant, just to err on the side of caution to have the POET system put in. And we'll continue to monitor water quality at the restaurant at Paxabog. And maybe one day, we will bring public water down to it when it's economically feasible. Yeah, Frank's been working on this, I mean.
For the board's information, Jake, two things. One, the total cost of the project would also include extending the main and then connecting from the main to the building. So you're talking about $125,000 approximately.
This is the connection to the water district.
If we're going to use.
To go onto public water at this moment.
I've been in conversation with the Suffolk County Health Department and the DEC. And because it is a publicly owned facility that serves the public, they are considering whether or not the DEC would install the POET system, which would result in no cost to the town. They didn't hang up the phone on me, so that's a good sign. So they're taking that into consideration. There would be a cost of in the neighborhood of $4,000 or $5,000 for a POET system and annual quarterly maintenance on the system. But the DEC and the Health Department are considering, because if it's a public facility and it's open 24, or 12 months a year, and it does serve the public, even with no detects, they might be willing to support installing the system at the DEC's cost for installation and ongoing maintenance, which would be the best outcome. The jury's still out in that regard, but it's important the board, I think, knows that that's a good possibility.
Yeah, and it's important to understand that we did recently have that water tested, and there are no detections whatsoever of these chemicals, so.
And it's a protocol, as I'm sure the board members know, that restaurants that serve the public have a quarterly water testing for public, you know, even privately owned restaurants that serve the public. The Health Department tests their water quarterly. They don't always test for PFOS, BFOs, but in this case, they did, because it is in that Wayne Scott survey area.
Right, it's very close to the border with the town of East Hampton. It's within, I think, 500 feet of the border. So, and on the border, which is Town Line Road, they now have public water. There's public water near there. That's part of that big East Hampton project.
Expansion.
But it's still, it's a long enough distance that it's a little cost prohibitive.
Yeah. And the confusion here was that their initial proposal, that's not, their initial documentation only referenced the cost associated with getting from the street to the building. And I think the resolution that you approved was for, I'm going to say, $18,000 or $19,000, which was the cost.
Of the, of the.
Of the connection. They did not include in the initial contract the cost of getting the main to that location, which added the additional $100,000. I think this course of action is wiser for the town ultimately, and affords the public the proper protection.
Charlie, the mics are a little hot. If nobody else is noticing that, I just kind of feeding back a little bit, if you could turn that down. Okay, thank you, Frank.
You're welcome.
Okay, thanks, Charlie.
Okay. Town Board Res.
Go ahead, Tommy, John.
Yeah. Town Board Resolution 31, 30168, to rescind the Town Board Resolution 2018-769, authorizing the purchase of a 2018 Ford F-150 from Great Neck Ford, LLC, DBA Tower Ford.
Thank you. 30172, rescinds Town Board Resolution 2008-785, authorizing the purchase of a 2018 Ford F-150 from Webster Ford, Inc. I guess we're switching these to state contracts. Maybe we got a lower number. Let me see.
Says the Ford can't do it.
I set the order. Oh, it was off of New York State. But I guess they, the contract, the vendor cannot accept it. All right, well, I guess we'll have to figure out how we're going to get those.
The next one, you got them.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, here we are. There you go. 30, I guess they figured it out. 30173, Resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2019 Ford F-150. All right. And there's the other one. 30179, Resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2019 Ford F-150 for the Community Preservation Department.
Town Board Resolution 30155, 2018 Notice to Bidders for Demolition at 18 South Crestview Drive in Remsenburg.
And 30170 is the bond authorization for the Ponquod Bathing Facility. Now, we discussed, 30157, amends the 2018 adopted budget for various departments. 30132, amends the 2018 adopted capital budget for Hot Dog Beach. 30134, amends the 2018 adopted capital budget for the Ponquod Bathing Facility. 30154, amends the 18 capital budget and CPF Hot Dog Beach access ramp.
Town Board Resolution ID 30129, co-sponsored with Councilman Loftstad, to authorize the budget modification to the Community Development Block Grant Program for fiscal years 2017.
Resolution 30139, appoint Trails Advisory Board for 2018.
Town Board Resolution 30171, to recall and rescind the Resolution 2018-875, accepting the resignation of members from the Southampton Arts and Cultural Committee.
So this, Tommy, John, this is basically that there were two members, Dorothy Lichtenstein and, where's the other Brenda?
Brenda Simmons.
Brenda Simmons, yeah. So we're, they're going to stay on the committee then?
Yes. Well, one person really is not on the committee, so it's hard to accept her resignation if she's not on the committee.
Okay, so what?
But this doesn't put them, this doesn't put both of them automatically back on, right?
No, it's just rescinding resignations.
Okay. And then we, that's the only part, it's rescinding? Because there was, we also added a few members at that during this. We, I think in one resolution, took two members off and added like four or five members on, or was that a separate?
Those were different resolutions, if I recall.
Okay. This was, okay, this was just a resolution that had accepted the resignation, so, all right.
And they do support the Arts and the Cultural Committee, it's just, it was a question of the time.
Okay.
So.
30140, authorizes the Town Attorney to reimburse Nymer. That's the New York Municipal Insurance Reciprocal. The deductible for a claim paid on behalf of the town.
30162, accepts a donation of interpretive signage from Hampton Bays Rotary Club for the Edward J. Warner, Senior, Senior or Junior? Senior. Old Ponquod Bridge Marina Park. Thank you.
Okay. 30111, authorizes Community Preservation Fund tax refund pursuant to the first-time homebuyer's exemption for Tatiana Fros and Rogerio Fros Silva.
30160 is a waiver of a portion of the showmobile fees for the San Gennaro Fest of the Hamptons.
Town Board Resolution.
Can I co-sponsor that one?
Sure.
Town Board Resolution 30131, this is the 2018 manufactured home community license.
29515 abolishes civil service position. This is sponsored with Councilwoman Bouvier, Councilwoman Loftstad, and Councilwoman Schigellmann.
Everybody but me, what?
What am I doing? Don't know where it came from.
Yeah, me either.
The finally competitive position.
Did you want to say anything, Jim?
It was just a reorganization of the Code Enforcement Division.
Okay, all right.
So you want to add yourself?
Was that the one we were talking about?
No, I think that, no. No, I'll leave just the part of you. 30124, accepts resignation of an office application specialist. 30123, accepts resignation of a construction equipment operator. 30104, accepts retirement of James McGooey, Assistant Aid and Assessor's Office.
Can I just go back? Because Amon is one of the sponsors, but I wasn't, we talked about doing this, but we also talked about, because I'm really, I have a problem with reducing staff in code enforcement. So, I mean, if we're going to be taking out that one position, my understanding is we're going to be putting in, so that we can get somebody under them. So I want to make sure that that position.
Right, there was actually, since that time, they did hire somebody under them, a new code enforcement officer.
I think so. Right, but are we short, are we down one then? Down a position?
No, because they did hire.
Here's Russell.
Yeah, I agree with that. That was my understanding as well.
Yeah, they did hire, they.
Talking about the 29515 abolishing civil service position, assisting the ordinance enforcement, the senior town investigator.
And we talked about taking one out and adding.
Which is actually under town attorneys.
We did add one. This, this resolution was supposed to be a walk-on back in July when we.
So it's housekeeping.
It's just housekeeping.
I don't want to reduce staffing there, I mean, that was the intention, okay.
So we added the position, but we never passed the resolution to abolish it. It was supposed to be walked on that night, and it did not get walked on.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you. Okay, sorry.
Okay. Okay. So.
104.
I think I, I was, I think we, 30104 accepts retirement of James McGooey, Assistant Aid and Assessor's Office. 30135, authorizes GIS manager to attend the New York State Geospatial 2018 Summit. Sounds pretty cool.
Yes.
30136, authorizes Town Management Services Administrator to attend the Association of Governmental Risk Pools, AGRIP, Fall Educational Forum. 30084, terminates employment of an automotive mechanic, too. 30133, notice of public hearing to consider amending Town Code 10-5 as it relates to the procedure for capital program amendments. I think we may have talked about that.
This is when we had the work session with Katie?
Yes. 30137 is a notice of public hearing on the acquisition of a restrictive use easement and historic preservation easement on property located at 90 Main Street Sag Harbor, and amends the Community Preservation Project Plan and the CPF Management and Stewardship Plan to include that property. So this is the Sag Harbor Cinema. We, you know, with this public hearing, are entertaining the idea of purchasing certain development rights, commercial rights over that building, restricting it to community use, as well as restricting some of the fares or fees, ticket prices that can be charged. This is potentially an important step in the revitalization or recreation of that Sag Harbor Cinema. And I welcome co-sponsors, if people want to join in on this.
I would like to co-sponsor that. Does this include the facade easement as well?
Yes.
Yep.
Includes the facade easement as well.
It will always be a cinema.
Oh, yeah, it'll always look the same from the street, and it'll always be a community cinema. So they'd be selling some of the commercial rights to do other things there, like mini malls and.
And affordable.
Yes, and affordable, yeah. 30161 is, assumes lead agency for the purchase, purpose of secret review for the change of zone application entitled Five Cedar Lane, LLC, requesting a change from residential R40 to Hamlet Commercial Residential HC, NYAC. That, it's got to be Cromer's Market.
And it's.
So we've talked about this, we had a work session on this, so this resolution is just to take lead agency on it. 30175, reestablish lead agency for preparation of a supplemental generic environmental impact statement, SGIS for the Hampton Bays Downtown Overlay District, Hampton Bays. And you should have some additions. There should be another little smaller packet. John, you had the first on that.
Yes. This is Town Board Resolution ID 30177, notice of public hearing to consider Community Preservation Fund CPF Water Quality Improvement Projects through the W Quip, proposed for round one, 2018 funding. So this is the first group of projects that have been reviewed by our Water Quality Board, and they'll be presented to you. And you'll also note in here that there's, there will be, these were televised, the original applications with the applicants. So the board will have an opportunity to look at those prior to this public hearing. And then you'll, you'll be presented with five of the five applications for funding.
Or six.
I'm sorry, six.
Will we be choosing from the six or prioritizing them, or it's just on together?
These are the ones that are recommended together, and you can, you know.
And the funding's there.
Yeah, and in the resolution, you'll see the links to the televised.
Right.
But we got to be able to see the ones that didn't get recommended, that proposed?
In this case, they were all recommended. But in the future, you're, we're working up a slightly different process to make that a little easier.
So all these are recommended, do we have? I don't see it here, what the costs are.
That, that's, that will be presented in public hearing.
Okay, because we do have, obviously, a limitation of that 20%.
And you guys will all get a sheet with, a fact sheet with all the information about it.
And we want to, you know, I need to review them in the context of how much money we're allotting for our rebate program, our rebate program, that, that there's added, you know, should we decide, let's say, to fund all of these?
Well, as you can imagine, there've been some, just a lot of discussions over the last few days for exactly that. So you'll have all that opportunity to do that. This is just a notice of public hearing for.
And these would be projects that would start in 2019? Or are some of them slated for later, multifaceted, like multi-phased?
Well, I'm not part of that process, obviously, because I'm at the other end of it, too. I make those, you know, decisions with you guys. So you'll be presented from planning and from the CPF Director.
Okay.
And the hearing was, was public, and it's on Channel 22, and we can get it. And some of them are one-shot deals, and some of them are multifaceted.
And you'll, you'll have the links to that, so you can go see that.
Right.
And then Resolution ID, blah, blah, blah. 30184 is to authorize the supervisor to sign a donation agreement with the Boy Scout troop, 483, for an open-air shelter structure at Squiretown Park. It's an Eagle Scout project, so.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Okay, so we'll just, yeah, we'll find out more?
Yeah.
Where it's going to go and. Okay. I noticed a typo in the resolution. It's minor, but in the first, whereas.
Which resolution?
The word Squiretown Park is, it's missing an R in Park, it's Squiretown, PAC.
They're from Boston.
What's that?
It's from Boston, that's the way to go.
PAC, or it's, it's not a political action.
No, it's definitely not, it's BAK.
Not the right spelling.
Okay. Oh, it's to rehabilitate a shelter structure that's already there. Okay. All right, sounds good.
Yeah.
Love those Eagle Scout projects. All right, so that's it. Any other questions about the agenda? So we'll add these two to it. Fix the one typo. Add a co-sponsor here and there. All right, can you got everything?
Got it.
Yeah, all right. So that's done. So before we do executive session, any updates? I guess I can mention a couple things. We did, we did get a report, as you probably read, from the police chief on crime statistics, year-to-date. Encouraging, so all major crimes are down by 20% from last year, which were down by, I think, 8% from the year before. So it's a, we're.
Trending down.
It's trending down, and this was a big, a big jump downward. That's positive, and, you know. Obviously, we're using crime analytics, we're using a community policing model, we're using this problem-oriented policing model, engaging the community, getting cops out of cars in some cases, walking downtowns, and we've increased patrols in certain areas. And increased communication. I think it's a combination of a lot of efforts, as well as, I think there's, as the economy strengthens, it strengthens, crime rates tend to fall, too, so there may be some broader trends that we're seeing. But it's certainly encouraging news to see major crimes fall by double digits, in this case, 20%. The budget we talked about earlier, putting the finishing touches on the proposed budget for next year, then it, then it becomes the board's budget. So on next Thursday, next Thursday, that'll be presented. I know there was a meeting in Hampton Bays, I was not there, on the Form 8 code. Several of you were there, if you don't want to talk about how that went.
I think it went really well, the presentation that our planning department gave, I think it was very detailed. They answered a lot of questions. There was some comment back and forth from the audience, and I think it was, Tommy John was there as well. I think it was a good meeting, informative.
It is, and it's the town engaging the community, and we heard from the community. Positive, you know, some questions, and our planners did a fine job explaining what we are planning on doing in Hampton Bays and, you know, what the purpose of zoning is. Right, it is a 10, 15-year plan.
Long range.
To improve the community, in the way they want it to go. So it was well-attended, and it was generally good.
I think that we'll do more outreach. And I think that we'll do more outreach specifically, specifically to the businesses in the area that it may affect, perhaps potential developers, so everybody's on the same page and know it's coming down the pike.
Your email synopsis was helpful, too.
Oh, good.
Yeah, you put together.
Excellent.
I had a meeting the other day with folks from the animal shelter, the one in Jackson Avenue. They would like to build out some additional space, about 4,000 square feet, for animal training. I guess there's a, sometimes there's an issue with adoptions and these animals not being acclimated or ready for the home that they're moving into. Maybe they, they don't know how to navigate staircase, or haven't been exposed to mirrors, or maybe are still having teething issues, whatever it might be, so, or don't know how to jump into a car, and, you know, so they want to have this space where they can do additional training, so that when these adoptions do occur, the animals are more adjusted and less likely to come back to the shelter, so.
They're also going to be walking the animals in that enclosed area, right?
So they're proposing to do this, that like, it's like a $3 million addition. They're going to raise all the money for it. They're not asking us for anything other than the ability to build out, kind of, within the square that they're already occupying, so it's, we are talking, though, because they only have two years left under license agreement, of extending that and possibly converting it to a lease, so that it's easier for them to fundraise. If, you know, people don't want to donate, you know, thousands of dollars, not knowing that if they're going to be there, because technically, the building belongs to us. It still would belong to us, but if they know that they're going to be there for an extended period of time, and they do do a wonderful job there. So I just wanted to let you know that, you know, they're working on a plan, we're discussing it with them, and we're trying to come up with a proposal that you guys will be able to review. And I did meet with Steve Troyd, we talked about where we are with ordinance enforcement and the other functions. I've asked him to come, and since he's been here a year now, kind of update on the progress of ordinance enforcement, and to give us a breakdown of the progress they're making, the changes they've, they're making, how SOS system is working, whatever changes that they're recommending. So we will have a work session coming up on ordinance enforcement with that update. And I think that's it for now. Julie, do you want to share anything?
I'm good today, thank you.
Christine?
I'm good.
Yeah, John?
Thanks.
I'm good as well.
All right, so I would like to go into executive session on confidential legal advice. First item relates to the Hampton Bays Water District, and the second item relates to the Long Beach Utility District options for funding. So, other than that, I'll make a motion to adjourn our work session and go into executive session on those two items. Second?
Second.
With by Councilman Loftad, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.